I'll just call the rule. Chairman Cirillo?
Yeah.
Council Leahy?
Yeah.
Council two present.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for attending this Neighborhood Subcommittee. And this is our, we're going to each neighborhood and having a Neighborhood Subcommittee, and we're bouncing around from neighborhood to neighborhood. So we're here at the downtown neighborhood, and so thank you so much for hosting us. And this meeting is with regards to the winter and winter conditions throughout the city, and what we can do to be safer, and how we, you can help yourselves and also us know what to do in certain situations with regards to the winter and snow removal and what have you. And since this season, we're right, we're starting the season now, I felt it was important that we, we get this, we nip it in the bud and really, really start off with getting the knowledge out to the residents of Lowell. So I actually have some notes, and I'm just, I'm just going to probably ramble on just a little bit, but, so, and, and I will acknowledge everyone that's here from the city. I'm City Councilor Karen Cirillo. Right to my left is Councilor Leahy. Mayor Samaras is here in the back. Eric Slagel is here. Shawna Forcia is here, and Jim Donaldson is also here.
Steve Benoit.
Oh, and Steve Benoit. I'm so sorry. So there's, there's a couple of things that I felt were important to note with regards to the winter. I feel that these, these are really important issues because once your house is closed up for the winter, you want to make sure that your carbon monoxide detectors are working since your, since your house is closed up and you're running your heat constantly. And also, your, also your fire detectors are, are working properly, and, and I, I put down here aside money for gas for your car, or make sure your car is gassed up so that you can get around. And for the outdoors, if, if you notice that there is a light in, in the downtown area or in your area of Lowell that's not, that's not working, since it's a safety issue, especially when walking in, in a snowy area, since we're not, we're not everywhere that you are, just let us know. There is an area of the, the city website that you can let us know when a light is out. And so that's, that's really important for when you're walking in the snowy areas. And also, we have, the junior ROTC is available for shoveling. So if you know someone who is elderly, or if you have a family member that's elderly, you can go onto the city website and request the junior ROTC come and shovel, which is a really key thing that not many people know of, but it is a service that the Lowell High School Junior ROTC provide to the city. And, and just be sure that when there is a parking ban, try, do your best to not park on the street, because what happens is, is that will give the, the plows an easier access to your road, and they can do their, their job efficiently and quickly to get to all the roads as quickly as possible, because this is a big city and they're trying to do their job. And if they have to go around cars, that doesn't make it easier. That makes it more difficult and a lot, and it takes more time. And so, and, and last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city did open up some areas for parking for the people who needed to get off of the street. It was the garages. Yes, the garages will be available for, for people who need to park and who don't have access to a driveway. So John, do you, can you add to any of this? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to go all, your house, make sure your house is safe, make sure this, the roads are safe.
Yeah, they will do the reverse call, whatever they, the reverse call, to let you know that there's a parking ban and use the garages. And if you have any issues with sidewalks or any type of snow, just give the mayor's office a call or the manager's office, and they'll get to the property department. I did want to bring up one thing from last month's meeting. We talked about the cameras that might go on street on the lights, the traffic lights, and would take pictures of cars going through red lights. So apparently, they told me that that's illegal in Massachusetts, which I didn't know, but I, because we've been working on this for like 10 years trying to get cameras. And now they finally tell you they're illegal, so. But I don't know if you've noticed, Jack, if the lights are any better for pedestrian crossings or...
Funny that you should ask that, because I noticed a change on your favorite spot, Dutton and Market.
Oh, yeah.
But it changed in a way that I thought was kind of opposite what, what the traffic in, maybe I just misunderstood it. But now, if, when, well, when the lights change, it used to be like the light, when the lights went green, if you hit the, as you're heading down, as a pedestrian heading down Market, crossing Dutton, it used to be if you hit the, the walk thing, then the, the walk light would come on immediately. Well, now, it doesn't come on for a minute or so. So the, the cars are already, are already making the turns, then the walk, the walk starts, which, I mean, maybe the traffic engineer has a better idea than I do, but it doesn't seem like once the cars are...
Yeah, we can find out. She said she was going to try to give the pedestrians a three, four second head start.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So we have Shawna back there, Shawna Forcia, so we'll have her check on it.
Just something like the opposite of what, what she was saying. So maybe somebody misunderstood what she heard directed or something.
Yeah, we'll check on it. So, okay. There was a question about that?
Yes.
Is it legal to put up a sign that says the intersection is under video surveillance as a bluff?
You could, but then you'd be liable if something probably did happen and they went back to the sign, so. But they are looking at the cameras that could be on a corner and videotape, you know, the surrounding area, so we can try to do that. We were talking about the lights maybe, and people go through lights, we get a ticket, but...
A chance of speaking with the local delegation to see if the, that could be, the state regulation could be changed?
That's a good point. We could check into that, find out where they are on that. I know they use them out in California, so I don't know why they're illegal here, but...
DC.
DC. Oh, yeah. All right, so we can check.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would ask, Jim, could you speak to some, some ways that the residents can be safe in, since you are, it's your trucks that are out there and your people that are out there?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, and I'm going to have Steve Benoit, who's the deputy commissioner for the Streets Department.
Thank you.
And he's going to talk a lot about the, the street plowing operation.
Yes.
In Public Works Department, we have the Streets Division, then we have the Parks Division. The Streets Division is responsible for removing the snow, obviously, in the street sections. Then we have the Parks that assists with the, the removal of snow on sidewalks, at the schools, and throughout the downtown area, and they work very closely together. And we also have some of the engineers in the Engineering Division that had, that are the, what do we call them now? We have a new term for them. They used to be Spots, Snow Spotters, but we changed it this year. The District Snow Managers.
All right.
Different areas in the city.
Yes, yes. Because we do have, we do have spotters out there looking and making sure that your streets and your...
We're not going to call them spotters anymore. We're going to call them District Managers.
All right.
Which, so they work with Steve very closely, because at some point during the course of the storm, we have, I'm not exactly sure how many we have, as far as contractors that assist the city with plowing operation, but we had about 99 contracts that we sent out to different individuals throughout the city. We still have a number that still haven't got back to us or haven't been processed, but probably about 75 is my guess, maybe somewhere 60, 75. So Steve's responsible to, at a certain point during the course of the storm, when the depth of the snow gets too, too deep, he will call in the contractors, he will call in the snow managers, and they will manage the snow. So I'll, I'll let Steve just talk about how he starts the, the process once he's monitoring the weather stations and, and the different apps, or the different websites that we have that provides us with snow information. So go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, Steve Benoit, I'm the Deputy Commissioner of the Street Department. I do handle all phases of the snow operation in the city. Usually starts out with monitoring the forecasts, look and see what kind of precipitation we're going to get, timing of the event. Focuses on rush hour, both in the morning, getting people out of the city at night is equally important. School buses to their intended destinations. So there's a lot that goes into it. Again, we have two paid forecasting services that supply information to the Commissioner and most of the department heads in the city. I process that. I do look elsewhere. I'm not big on TV people. They seem to glamorize a lot of the storms. I don't give them glamour. I need to know what I'm looking at. It's 500, 100 miles of street in the city. If we're in charge, if not, any one mile is more important than the next. We do have main roads and stuff that are the focus, getting people in and out. Usually the storm will start out as, you know, light precipitation, salt trucks will be idling, ready to go. They go on my command. Once we determine that either the salt's not having the desired effect, or the precipitation is overwhelming the salt, the city trucks will swap to plow right away. And depending, you know, again, it's a fluid situation, so as the event is continuing, we'll make the determination to bring in a subcontracted fleet, as Jim mentioned. Very big asset to us. We have approximately 100, 100 odd pieces in the city, the city owns. Without the contracted fleet, that number's at its peak, close to 200 pieces, we could never maintain the level of service that we have right now. A lot of tight neighborhoods slow us down. Somebody brought up the parking ban and how important it is to try and keep cars off of the street. We do understand that Lowell is a very, very congested city. We can't possibly make all these cars disappear. There's none of the parking garages. There's just not enough ways to ask the citizens to remove everything. We do focus on main roads, secondaries, high priority roads, either hospital routes, bridges, things like that. We have to have, absolutely have to have those clear in the event that we're going to be looking at, you know, six, eight, 10, 12 inches of snow. That becomes cumbersome from up, for us. So as the event goes on, and, you know, there's no timing, you know, there's nothing that says it starts at 1:00 and ends at 4:00. Some of these go on 18, 24. I've personally been in the office for 45 straight hours. We stay until it's If we get the cooperation, that cooperation we need from the police department and the residents by clearing those mains and secondary streets, it helps us a lot. It allows the trucks to continue on the route quicker, to get to the smaller streets that dead ends, because, you know, residents everywhere pay their taxes. They all want the same service, and we understand that. But we do have, the responsibility is to keep the traffic flowing. Some areas we don't get to later on in the storm, but we don't forget them. There is a hotline, if you, if you were to go on the city's website, there is a hotline to our Office Direct, so that we avoid calling City Hall, which I'm sure gets inundating with calls. Call our Office Direct. We have District Managers out. The District Managers supervise the subcontracted fleet and the street trucks that are in their areas, neighborhoods. Everything gets reported back to me, so I'm aware of what's going on. But I can also make the changes on the fly that need to happen in the event that there's one location that's not being serviced as it should.
Steve, what is the phone number, the hotline phone number, so that the residents will know?
The office is 978-674-4111. We'll get you right to our DPW office.
Fantastic.
We usually have, especially during the day, normal business hours, but up until probably 8, 9 o'clock at night, we staff the phone. After 9 o'clock, and, you know, most people are indoors, they've gone to bed for the evening, traffic is very, very light. So that gives us a chance to really accelerate our treatment procedures. Then I have somebody back on the phone at 5:00 AM in the morning, because that's when people are getting up. They're taking their first look outside. We want their concerns addressed right away. Usually, depending on storm, we're ready to go. We're ready to go for rush hour. We, we understand how important it is to get people to work. Schools try and keep schools open. That's what we strive for. Do we hit it all the time? Nope. It's another nature. It's one during New England. You know, we do the very best we can with the, with the staff and the equipment we have. I like to say we hit it more often correct than we do incorrect. The guys are very, very in tune to the city's needs, so. I know this is downtown group, so downtown focuses a lot of snow buildup and stuff interfere with business operations and stuff like that. We are aware of that. The City Manager's Office and the Councils are also very focused on that, too, and we're made aware when there are major concerns. That being said, we cannot possibly clean downtown every time it snows. If it gets to a point where it becomes a hassle or, you know, potential problem to businesses, that's when we act. You know, we do come around, we do try and keep parking spots clean, so there are, you know, it's tight enough as it is. We don't want to lose any parking. But, you know, I would ask businesses, whatever you can do to help us clean up in front of your, your stores, ice melt, for our patrons and things like that. And also for the pedestrians, downtown now has such a, a large amount of residents, more so than five years ago, that that's something that we're, we're, it's even new to us, the amount of requests that come out of this area. It used to be at night downtown closed down. That was it. We didn't hear another word. Now it's a large contingent of residents here that, that need that service also. So we don't mind hearing from you. We, we want to hear. We want to know how we can do it better, so.
I was wondering what the protocol is if a plow, for example, is coming down Dutton, for example, toward Market Street, heading toward Bottom Morset in that direction. If the sidewalk is plowed, will the snow plow come down and potentially put snow back at the end of the sidewalk? Because a week ago Saturday, I was volunteering at the community swap, and I have a granny cart full of donations, and I was on the sidewalk on Market Street. And I got to the end of the street, of the sidewalk, and I couldn't navigate because the snow was piled up there, and it was...
Was this during or after the storm, or...
This was a couple of days, this was a couple of days after the snow.
Okay.
So it had been there for at least a day, if not longer.
We walk a fine line, and this happens with sidewalks. It happens with driveways. It happens everywhere.
Well, my concern was, I was not in a wheelchair, but I could have been.
Sure.
And that person would have just not been able to navigate.
Absolutely. Not to make excuses, our subcontracted staff is very low at the moment. We weren't expecting 10 inches of snow on November 15th. It just doesn't really happen. We had 10 inches between the 15th and the 20th. Two storms added up to about 10 inches of snow. It's seven inches there for a storm, which, it's New England. That seven inches doesn't really bother us. It does impact sidewalks. Those sidewalks are maintained usually by smaller tractors and stuff. They're not available to us at the moment. They're still in contract phase, or some haven't even signed on to us yet. It's, it's an expense to a contractor to sign on early. They have to fork over a lot of money to get their insurances up to, you know, what the city requires. So a lot of them play a game and wait as long as they can into December. You know, we're talking mid-November this time. So what we did these last two storms was unprecedented with the amount, with the amount of contractors we had. The service that we put out was, you know, in my eyes phenomenal. Did we have issues like that? Absolutely. I was going, I live in Petterville. I came over the O'Donnell Bridge on Saturday after the, after that storm. It was the Tuesday storm. So this was Saturday, and I saw a woman in a pushing a stroller, and she couldn't go off the sidewalk. Now, you had no excuses. That's not my, that's a different department, but I got on the phone immediately, and I said that needs to be rectified immediately. You cannot have people coming off that sidewalk. Those are the kind of things that we strive not, you know, that's not acceptable. Doesn't happen on occasion, absolutely. If it happens frequently, we need to err on it.
Yeah.
You know, we try.
I think I understand. It's fairly labor intensive, but if you're walking along and sidewalks are cleared, you get to the street to cross, you can't cross if it's piled up snow.
Exactly. It's routine. It's not, in fact, it's not unusual. It's routine, right?
The other problem you have is, especially in the beginning of the year, our trucks are mandated to clean the street curb to curb. Well, they're not vacuum, so they just push. So if we want them curb to curb, it's got to go somewhere. Unfortunately, that means it buries the sidewalk. So what we need to do is have better interdepartmental communication. Once we're done with the street, then send a little tractor down to them. But especially in the high pedestrian areas, that's, you know, it has to happen that way. We do have a new park superintendent coming on who handles that's in his realm of responsibility. I expect we'll have a meeting with the Commissioner to go over those responsibilities and make sure that, you know, we try and deal with situations like that.
Also, I wasn't sure, especially in downtown sidewalks in front of businesses, is that the city or the business that's responsible for the piece of sidewalk right in front of the store?
I believe that's the businesses.
Yes.
There were a few spots last winter that was the same businesses that absolutely did not get cleared, and some were very well cleared.
That's a call you'd make to the Inspection Services Code Enforcement. Kind of see how the department...
Eric?
I was about to say, you know, just point at me. He has inspectors that would go out and take care of that. There is ticketing involved if it gets to be that point. I think sometimes it's just a lack of communication and it's solved, so.
What's the, what's the time frame?
I'll talk about that in just a few minutes.
Yeah.
So while we're on the topic of sidewalks, which is of course your thing, but I, I also just wonder, and just a general comment, if, if there's a sort of an awareness that different sidewalk materials need to be treated differently. I know on Market Street, the brick sidewalks can be treacherous with ice much longer, and there's a stretch in front of the, where a garage, and then past the credit union. And that brick sidewalk, depending on the weather, sometimes it's total, it's better than other things, but sometimes it's, you know, it's that glass sheet ice.
Yep.
And it stays there for a long time. So I don't know if there's an awareness that different surfaces have to be, you know...
Right. I think they treat most of the sidewalks now with calcium chloride. I think part of the issue is the brick has a very, very sheer finish, so I think that's helping the ice form and become more of a glaze versus the concrete that has a little bit of a rough finish. I don't know if there's any kind of, that, that will be brought up to, you know, the park superintendent, so they can monitor that to see if, you know, there is an issue. I don't know of a different type of chemical between brick, asphalt, concrete. I know...
Frequency of treatment or something.
Yeah, that, that would probably be the issue, is frequency. You gotta, you gotta get on it more often. So, but again, I'll, I'll make note of it. Thank you.
I live downtown, so when it snows, and I retire somewhere, but when it snows, I park my car. And most of the time I walk. But last Wednesday, I walked from here over to the line, and every city sidewalk is responsible. The city's responsible with covered ice. Everyone. And all the, probably pretty much clear. But South Common, for example, all the sidewalks around there were just sheer ice, and...
I think, again, that kind of brings back to where we were short-handed, and that one caught us, you know, as far as the sidewalk side goes, caught us a little off-guard. I think the streets, we had the streets well under control.
I can see the streets are clear. And it doesn't need to be plowed with just some sand or something. That's what we're on foot and break ahead.
Last year, it's very bad on the roof of the garages. When the snow plow is pushed the snow over. Any sidewalks or emergency exits, it's now covered in snow, and it may not be removed. So I don't know if there is either, you're going to plow the top of the garage, just do a once-over around the perimeter of the garage to make sure. I know the V O B garage is a door in the back left-hand corner. That door kept getting closed, snowed in by the snow being pushed over the side. So I don't know if it's just an active, if there's something, you know, just a better awareness of that.
Yeah.
I know it's bad.
That's handled by the parking department itself.
Is it? Okay.
You don't even get involved in that. But I'm very, I'm friendly with the, with the parking director. That'd be a form called...
Bring in Tobias.
So this is the parking director. Great guy. I'll make note of that. I'll speak totally about it. I'm sure just that if I called it, it's contractors and swing that up.
Well, Steve, thank you so much for all that you do and all this information. I think it's, I think it's key for the residents to know that there is that hotline number, and I am going to repeat it. It's 978-674-4111. And they are open at 5:00 AM until 8:00 to 9:00 PM. The phones are being manned. So that is, that's a wonderful, wonderful...
That's usually, just so you're aware, choosing the bigger storms, the smaller stuff, we don't usually staffing up for that.
Okay.
Our number rings to one of either myself or my deputy all the time. When we're there during storms, somebody's answering our phone. So if there was, you know, when we get a lot of volume of calls, that, you know, necessitates that we have almost a clearinghouse to siphon through phones, so.
Okay. Thank you for that service. Eric, you're up. Sidewalks.
So my name is Eric Slagel. I'm the Director of Development Services. For those who don't know, the Development Services covers a lot of different parts of the city operation. For our purposes tonight, all of the health and building inspectors work in my office, and so they respond to all the co-complaints, specifically things like sidewalks. In response to what Council Cirillo had mentioned earlier, a couple of things before I talk about sidewalks are things about snow load on roofs, ice dams, and icicles forming. It's important for all property owners to keep an eye on those sorts of things. And if you have any questions about or concerns about your building with respect to that stuff, you can call our office. We'll have, you can have an inspector come out and take a look at it for you. We have a, every winter, we get complaints, concerns, issues that come up with residents about roofs being overloaded with snow and causing leaks, snow damage, ice dams on roofs that, again, cause water to get inside the, the property and cause water damage, and icicles that create pedestrian problems, especially in the downtown where often the icicles are forming many stories above the ground. And if they're not, you know, taken care of in a proactive manner, they can create some sort of hazard for pedestrians that are walking through them. So just maybe, you know, property managers that are working your buildings just have that in particular with that stuff. But what you guys, I think, want to hear about is snow. And so I did want to talk a little bit about kind of the snow removal ordinance in the city. So notwithstanding the hard work that DPW does, especially in the downtown, our snow, our snow ordinance doesn't recognize anything but the property owner's responsibility to clear and clear up snow. So the owner of a property or their property manager has a requirement to clear snow within 12 hours after the snow stops falling. That's unless the snow starts falling after 6:00 PM, in which case you have until 1:00 PM the following day. And so that means that, it's not the business owners necessarily... And so, that means that, that, uh, it it's not the business owner's necessarily responsibility, it's the property owner's responsibility to make sure that snow and ice is cleared of all the sidewalks adjacent to the property. Additionally, it's also their responsibility to make sure that there's accessibility from the sidewalk to the street. That includes not just at handicap access corners, but also in the middle of long streets, punch, punchouts to the, to the street. That, this is something that I, I, I think Steve mentioned earlier, that unfortunately DPW just does not have the manpower to do all of this work in the downtown themselves. We really need the, the residents and the business and the property owners to, to kind of step up and, and, and do their best to take care of the things that are, that are on the responsibility. So, if you are living in a building, it is the responsibility of that building to make sure that their snow and ice is clear in front of the building. And that, that there are punchouts to the street, um, uh, at regular intervals to allow accessibility to the sidewalk. So, we do have a ticketing process. It is a kind of the process of last resort. We don't initially issue tickets. But if you, uh, call in to City Hall and indicate that there's a snow problem, our sanitary code enforcement officers or building inspectors will go out to the property and typically issue a warning to the property owner that they have a certain amount of time to, to clear the snow. If we have repeat violations or property owners that are, are kind of scofflaws and consistently ignoring their, their requirements to clear snow, then we'll start ticketing. Uh, we, we don't like to do ticketing unless it's a, it's necessary. But we do ticket every winter, we, we ticket properties. Uh, we do our best to keep those property owners informed of the, the responsibilities of the ordinance.
What's that number?
Six seven four four one four four.
And so, the 12-hour time period starts from what point?
When the snow stops.
Okay, so it's a stop.
So, and that, I mean, that, that's important to realize because if, as Steve mentioned, when we have really long storms, they're going to be a long period of time during which nobody's required by the ordinance to have their sidewalks cleared. So, that's just the reality of the ordinance. We, we, we can't, um, we can't force people to get out and clear more than once. But, but once it's over, we do have 12 hours. That does make it hard to do enforcement because that means, you know, we get out there. If there's a mild day and it melts, then we, we can't really enforce any big ones. But we do our best to try and make sure that they're aware of all their complaints.
Does it remember when we call enforcement city?
Well, so, you, you can, what I will do is call Jim. Probably best to go directly to the source. If it's a city, if you know that it's a city responsibility, I, I think letting DPW know about it is probably the most efficient thing to do. If you're unclear as to responsibility for a piece of property, let us know and we will track down the property owner, whether it be a city responsibility or a private.
There is, uh, on the website, the Civic Plus category. If you go to, uh, lolmas.gov, um, that's a, uh, a web-based way to get your complaints or requests sent directly to us. There's different categories of, uh, that involve winter streets, sidewalks, whatever. And, uh, they, uh, you know, they appear to directly write to either my office or, uh, the parks, you know, so.
Or my.
It saves you from having to sit on the phone and wait if in fact the phone lines are busy. Uh, you do see them and they do, we have to solve them. And you will see they're solved for us to close them up. So, that's, uh, that's another avenue.
So, if, if we enter them, we can see when, when they are marked as solved?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is that a new, relatively new feature or?
Civic Plus four.
Okay.
I've been at it for a while.
Good, that's great.
I think you're near as fast. Whatever the mechanism was, I think it was somewhat of a black hole. So, you would set something, you know, at this point.
That's great.
You can even request to be contacted back, put down.
Okay, thank you so much, Eric. And I just want to reiterate again about the Civic Plus area of the website where you can contact our, our DPW and our streets and our inspectional services. And, um, with, it's almost like a ticket system, correct, where?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a request-based.
Right.
It prompts you to, you know, to put in what you're looking for. And, uh, it's not just for winter, it's, it's year-round.
Right.
Sidewalk issues, any kind of issue you want, you can find it on the tree issues. And, um, that is directly tied to a city employee responsible.
Fantastic.
Perfume and trash. It's very helpful to us because, uh, there's no guessing, you know, it's right in front of us, we know where to go.
Right, thank you. Um, do you? Oh, sure.
Well, we have everybody here. Um, have we notified like business owners this year that they're responsible for cleaning up? Do we do that? Because last year, we did have a, I mean, we, we kind of are our own worst enemy. We send the bobcats up and down the sidewalks and they're not really wide enough. There's no cutouts for people to get in and off the sidewalks. So, we gotta do a better job with having the business owners do it. Or is there a way we can, um, you know, can you charge downtown businesses or, um, building owners? Maybe they just have to pay an extra winter tax. And when we have a parking van downtown, we gotta have more people downtown and you gotta throw that snow off the sidewalks into the street and then bring it down to the ends. I mean, we have a parking van, right? And the downtown is empty for 12 hours. There should be no excuses, you know, we gotta get the snow off the sidewalks. So, we could look, maybe we can look into that. Do other cities charge a snow tax? Or do we just have to pile guys down there, you know? You know, the sizzling kitchen up the street, I mean, he has a great business, but last year, he, he had like a shovel full in front of his business. I mean, that, it was two feet wide, walking by and back and forth. And it's like, I don't know why anybody didn't explain to him, it'd be better for your customers to have a wide sidewalk to come in than walk two feet.
Right, so, so I, I do want to be very cautious because it isn't the business owner's responsibility, it's the property owner's. So, this is a catch, it's a less easy, so he, it's his.
So, maybe, you know, maybe then we look into see if other towns that have a lot of snow charge a, a snow tax. I mean, because if they're not gonna come down and do it and we're gonna have the, the, um, bobcats go up and down the sidewalks, well, then, you know.
Is there a?
It's only fair, so.
Is there a flyer that we send out to, to the?
I mean, maybe this year, we should look into something, make a leaflet.
Is there a flyer? Yes.
Yeah, just last year, we had a flyer that was distributed downtown.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah.
Hi, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused, though. I hear about the bobcats that are going up and down the streets around downtown. But, and then I'm hearing, but it's the owner's responsibility to shovel. So, what, what, what's the distinction? And I think, for instance, I think the bobcat goes along Prescott Street where I live. So, what else? I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, right, we, we tell the, the property owners that they're responsible, yet we do it with the bobcat so they feel that they don't have to shovel because we went up with the bobcat, but it's not 100%. They're, they're on enough, um, outlets for people. I mean, sometimes you gotta go, you know, 500 yards up the street before you can cut in because you can't cut in between the cars, so, you know.
They clean out the bus stops here because the snow.
The bus stops, yeah.
Bus stops and the bobcats will come clean them out.
I mean, I would think with heavily traveled, pedestrian-traveled public streets, but the bobcat, I don't know, should the bobcat be doing more or should it be? And I think it, I think it's very confusing to residents, like, oh, we're supposed to do, the bobcat has come, then we're supposed to go up and rock map what they've done. And, and who, how do we, how would residents know that? Or even for that matter of business?
Well, we as a city have to do a better job.
We need to, oops, sorry, we need to, we need to make businesses more, business owners and residents more aware of, yes, this, this needs to happen. You do need to shovel your property, you need to shovel your sidewalks. And that's.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
The bobcats just get it off.
Yes.
Yeah, well, if it went up, if it went up one way and down the other, we'd make a, you know, I mean, these are.
It does, it makes a wide, it makes a big dent, but it's not, you know.
Right.
I mean, like, we have all the students going to over to Middlesex, walking up Prescott Street from the garage or wherever. So, um, and then down, you know, down and through. But, uh, it seems to me that, I, I guess I just assumed that the bobcat was responsible, the city was taking care of the sidewalk on the main, on the most heavily.
Yeah, I don't think we do, right? We, we're kind of helping out, but it's not.
I mean, I think so legally, it's the responsibility of the property owner to clear the sidewalks. In the downtown, ever since I've worked for the city, which was many, many years, the city has helped out with bobcats doing the sidewalks through the downtown. But that's, that's meant to be assistance, not responsibility. And that's, I, you're, I think you're right.
That's what we have to include.
Right.
To, to everybody.
Yes.
About who's responsible. The responsibility legally lies with the property owner.
I'm thinking, um, maybe a flyer, uh, maybe a tax bill or something, right? We just have to figure how, how to, how to be able to get that out to all the residents and business owners and property owners, all the property owners, so, yes.
I, I think one of the most helpful ways to do that is to let us know if you find people that aren't doing it. Give us a call, it's, you're not being, you're not being a bad person when you call and let us know. But somebody's not shoveling from it and we can have them go out and chase the property owner.
But I would say that, I mean, that's good for residential, but I think downtown, you know, we're all.
Right.
There's really only a few main streets. I mean, you got Central Street, you got Market and, and Merrimack and Middle and Dutton. I mean, someone, you know, we should have, as a city, we should have the responsibility to make sure that those are ticketed or cleared, so.
I, I would, I would think so. I mean, I can see if people want to go out and help. And I would think these streets, which is so heavily traveled by pedestrian, not just the neighbors, would be taken care of. Plus, if the bobcat's going up one side, if it turned around and came down the other, that would be a double-wide, double-wide path and I'd say, you'd have better access and everywhere.
I mean, we gotta look at, you know, George Duncan embarrasses us off, he flits. His whole sidewalk off, takes the snow away, you know, so.
Who's responsible for the bus stops, is the city or the LRTA?
That one, I'm not sure.
The city's responsible for all the bus stops.
The city does, yeah.
We have the, uh, the parks department, they send their crews out and they take care of all the bus stops, as well as all the bridges.
Are you guys using, um, the lot behind Town Place three as a snow field picture? I can actually see that there. Yes, thank you.
I apologize for that, it was just. Necessary evil.
It's exactly right, yeah.
I mean, that becomes a more of a problem too, the more various we develop now, we lose our snow.
Yeah, that's gonna be an issue this year where we have to come up with a new snow park or a new snow deposit area. Uh, last year, we used the Streets F and G, and now that's being developed right at the end of, uh,
Right.
uh, Market, right off of Broadway and Dutton. So, there's, that's not on location where we can spot the snow, so, but we'll have to figure it out.
Mayor? All set? Okay, I just, I just didn't know if you wanted to add anything to the conversation?
It was a good meeting.
Okay. All right, um, are there any more questions?
Uh, just one thing. So, from the last meeting, um, someone should have walked the walkways to check the lights. We found out about the cameras on the traffic lights, we can't do, but we'll see about cameras on the corners. And was there anything else? Oh, the, uh, well, the crosswalks, the crossings, so we'll check on the lights again.
You, you had one question?
Yeah, I don't know if you're the right person to ask, but it's about the, uh, the canals. Uh, I've only been living downtown for a year and I tell people I live on the water now.
Oh, yes.
Maybe I do, yeah, but water is gone now. And of course, it's not from a shortage of water, you know, but. Uh, and I hear different stories, someone said, oh, an Italian company owns the water rights or some, I don't know. Then someone else told me it's got to do with construction, but who do you ask or how do you find out definitively, you know, what the story is with the canals and when is the water coming back or?
Well, that has to do with the now, so.
Yeah, that I'm not sure.
Where, yeah, Eric, Eric?
Um, yeah, so. Boot Hydro, which is a hydroelectric plant, uh, on the river, is owned by an Italian company called Nell.
Yes.
They own all of the canals, the canal walls and the water rights in the canals. They have the right to draw down the canals whenever they choose. Sometimes they draw them down, um, at the request of the city. We're doing a lot of bridge work on bridges over the canals. You probably saw the one at Merrimack that just got finished. Have it walked over it, the one at Merrimack right now, it's very nice now, the sidewalk there is lovely.
Yes.
So, that just got finished, but there are four other bridges in various parts of the city that are going to be under construction over the next 18 months, 24 months or so.
Right.
And so, Nell is gonna be selectively drawing down canals because we have to do some surface kind of like, under the bridge work. And so, there, I don't know that there's a regular schedule for when they have to draw it down because it's based on construction.
Yeah.
But they also sometimes draw it down for their own, um, kind of internal reasons. Um, and then they let it back up for their own internal reasons. And we're not necessarily privy to those reasons.
And so, there's no way we can be informed of that?
The vast majority of the time, the water's going to be up. It has been down recently because of the construction.
Bridges, yeah, bridge construction.
Okay, so, there's no way we can know, that, that seems odd.
You can ask.
Are they not going into permitting process pretty soon?
They're, yeah, they're, they're, they're with FERC, the Federal Energy Right Commission. So, they have to do, but they have to do a, a process with FERC for permitting. Uh, a lot of the documentation on that process is confidential because it's part of, they are considered to be part of the energy infrastructure in the country. And so, only a certain amount of those documents, I, you, you can, I, I'm certain that someone could request in, in Nell and they might, may or may not provide that information to you.
During the tourist season, they're obligated, will Park Service keep the canals full for the votes?
Yes, and that's, and, 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 so that's for, for certain portions of the canals that the Park Service is usually about tours, they have to maintain the level of that during the different tourist season.
Just just on the bridges, is there an estimated time to have the Market Street to Salem road back open?
So, they.
Twenty twenty-two.
They, yeah, so they're prepping that bridge along with several others right now, um.
Right, yeah.
Uh, I, I, I mean, I think that that's, that's, I think at a certain point, that's gonna be open to one-way traffic. Um, but I, I, I think that bridge is a, is a 12 to 18-month construction.
Hasn't it been, it seems like they must have been going.
Oh, the one, the one hour of construction right now at Market Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have hope, they need one day of 50-degree plus weather in order to do their final payment. So, it's probably not gonna happen this fall, this winter.
Until the spring.
So, maybe next spring.
So, it's, they're, they're scheduled as soon as the spring breaks to remobilize.
It's been a long time.
It has, yeah. So, they, they got, they encountered some de-wiring issues with the canals. And, uh, but once they were able to get over that hurdle, which was probably in July, they, they ended up making it. They had told us a couple of months ago that it was gonna be complete by the end of October. Well, that they didn't even get that line.
Is it, is this a city project, state or federal or a combination?
State-funded, probably.
State-funded, city project.
Is that, that's not Tiger Bridge?
It's a Mass DOT.
It's the Tiger Bridge.
That, that bridge is a, is city-funded. The other bridges, including the one that was just on.
The Tiger.
Are part of the Tiger grant.
Tiger grant.
The federal, it's federally funded. Mass DOT and the city are jointly.
So, if you have questions, you could often call Mass, not about some of these, um, projects.
Yeah, you can call the city, you can call, uh.
Yeah, DPD has a, yeah, or the, or the engineer's office.
Yeah.
They work very closely, they have, uh, weekly construction meetings with the Mass DOT and with the contractor.
Yeah, you had a question.
Well, I have a question, this is maybe ending the meeting on a, on a optimistic note, maybe. Rather than talking about snow, I thought it was seasonal to talk about the spring. I was just wondering, when, and I thought I'd just take advantage of Eric being here and we were talking about sidewalks before.
Yeah.
Um, it's a perennial issue, we talked about it in this neighborhood group, about, um, when restaurants have outdoor seating and they rope it off and they encroach on, they make it so wheelchairs and strollers can't navigate. I don't know when the businesses come before the city council to request their, you know, their things. I assume it's some.
I don't know when the businesses come before the city council to request their, you know, their things. I assume it's sometime in the early spring. And the off-chance that we don't see between now and then, an idea that I had a while ago, and I bring up periodically, is if, when the, when the business gets their license or their, whatever the word is to occupy the sidewalk, if the city, an inspector could mark permanently on the pavement where they are allowed, you know, the boundary of where they can put their fence, then it would, I think it would solve a lot of problems with people saying, oh, the fence moves a foot out. Like, why don't, rather than doing that over and over and over again, why don't we just put down a spray paint marking or whatever.
Historic word?
Right, I, I, right.
So, yeah, so we've, 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 we've had that conversation.
Steve. Steve stole.
We're hoping to come up with some, if at one time, I'll note that, that the ones that already have their license don't have to get it reauthorized. It's a one-shot deal, once the city council suggests, they've got it forever.
Oh, that's amazing.
So it's not a reauthorization every spring.
No, right, no, yeah.
Um, we do have a, and they, they're required to submit a plan that chose distances. And we do have a member of the development services staff and a building inspector to, that do weekly walkthroughs of the downtown to measure those.
They do.
E- every week on Wednesdays, they, they do a walkthrough of the downtown and measure to make sure that there's sufficient.
It's only because they move out on Tuesdays.
Okay.
Well, well, that was a great note to, to end the meeting on spring. So, all right, well, thank you so much, everyone, for joining us this evening, um, and thank you for all of your wonderful questions. And thank you for everyone from the city being here to, to speak about snow and snow removal and, and how we can be a safer community. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second is third, fourth.